For the city of Dennison, we appreciate all of you being here with us this morning. We've got a pretty full agenda today, so we're gonna move right into it. It's our customary tradition to begin our meetings with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you would care to join us, we'd ask that you would stand with us at this time. Would you bow with me? Father, thank you for another opportunity to come together to solve the business of our city. We thank you for our home and the blessings that you've provided. We ask that you would be with us, that this meeting would be done decent and in order as you wish. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Little housekeeping before we actually get into our meeting this morning. The planning commission is a recommending body. What that means is on all cases, with the exception of plats and site plans, which our approval is final on, will be passed on to city council for final approval and that meeting will be held on...
May 5th.
May the 5th, thank you, Ms. York. So, on our public hearings, we're gonna give you the opportunity to come to the lecture and speak either on behalf of a case or in opposition to a case. We ask that you give us your name and address for the record. We'll go ahead and impose the three-minute limit today. So, that being said, we're gonna move into item three, our consent agenda. For the record, let me go ahead and say that I will be abstaining on item 3D. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question, being the newbie here. 3B, case 2025-61, I know it's a preliminary plat, but it's a big one and it's got two variances. Do we normally put that in consent agenda or do we talk about it?
So, it kinda depends. This is backed by a plan development as well as some development agreements. And for that reason, those exceptions or those variances are covered within the plan development or the development agreement and therefore, it kinda ties the commission's hands on whether they can disapprove those and that's why it's on the consent agenda.
Okay, and we'll see this again for the final.
It just depend, yeah, we could put it on here as a consent item for the final plat. The ordinance does allow for staff to approve those, but depending on what's required for a site plan, those would come before the commission, given that it's a plan development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff, comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 4A, moving into our public hearings. Let the record reflect that I will be stepping away due to a conflict of interest and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Sylvester.
Okay, this is regarding a rezone of, from light industrial district and multifamily to residential district to single-family SF5 residential district to allow for residential use.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everybody. The first case I have for you this morning is a request to rezone subject property that's commonly known as 323 East Chestnut from the light industrial zoning district and the multifamily zoning district to the single-family 5 zoning district. This is an aerial view of that subject property. You kinda see how it was split zone, why it was split zone like that, I do not know. And you can see to the east, it's adjacent to single-family zoning, single-family 5 zoning, to be exact, and that area, as well as the area to the north and some to the south, has been developed in a single-family manner. And the applicant first submitted a replat for the subject property. It currently consists of three lots. And so, they submitted a replat to plating them all into one legal lot of record and that's when we found that it was not zoned for residential use. And so, in order to move forward with the construction of a single-family home, the applicant had to request the rezone to single-family 5. Staff is supportive of this request. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner. So, rezoning the subject property to the SF5 zoning district is compliant with the future land use plan. And so, as I, because of that, staff recommends approval of the request. And I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Back on the, if I read that right, the other single-family homes that are actually on Main Street are also zoned light industrial or are single-family?
Yes, sir. It's not uncommon, especially in the older parts of town, but specifically in Dennison itself. I'm sure that whole corridor was zoned light industrial to accommodate the rail yard.
No issue with the storm cellar protruding into the one part of the block?
I don't know. So, it's kinda hard to see that here and I saw it on the survey. It's definitely something that we'll have to look into whenever they come through for a permit, but for rezoning purposes, it doesn't cause any issues and then we'll also catch it at plating so we can kind of flush through any kinda issues there.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Okay, our public hearing, we will note that we have one response that was in opposition to this request and I think they are present to address that. Sir, anybody here to speak in favor of this request? Anybody here with questions or to speak in opposition of this request? If so, please come forward and give your name and address for the records.
Jonathan Earnhardt, 110 South Houston Avenue, Dennison. I'm all for changing zone and then getting it proper and building and everything off the slate left. We own the lot next to this property, we own the property blocks north of it and we own the private hotel and the blocks over there by there and we are in plans to buy and put more lots on this block. This whole block was industrial when we started buying, buying it up. One house was changed to residential on the corner and we didn't catch that at first and then we contacted the city and the city state that they weren't wanting to do, we need more lots that way. The problem comes when you put residential next to light industrial. We have a zero setback, then we have a one-and-a-half times height setback. So, at 25-foot lot, I built a clear foot, 10-foot garage, 12-foot ceiling height. You know, takes me to 16 to 18 feet tall. Now, all of a sudden, I've got a 25-foot setback, so it renders our lots completely useless next to these properties. So, I ask if this is approved for residential, that we are treated as if it's industrial next door to it so it doesn't affect our building ability, that the lot's just very next door. If it's turned residential, we will no longer be able to use our property at all according to zoning laws. So, you're rendering one lot completely useless. And these lots have been zoned light industrial, the whole block was zoned light industrial. Main Street's put down its major corridor. I mean, the planning would be, changing that one would just really put it where it locks us out on ours. We already got plans for our lot. Our lot will be used as remote storage for the hotel. We've been very limited on what we were able to add and do to the hotel and that doesn't include storage pretty much for our building. But we own that part, that lot, and when north, we plan on doing any extra storage on or parking also and having a house next door would just give someone possibly the right to complain or come up here and say, hey, I have an house next door, what lot, so we're adding to one more houses. And really, what the zoning law makes it, where we can even use it. So, that's where I'd ask, at least that to be considered if it is passed, that we are allowed or treated as if that lot is still industrial when we do go and build on our lot. Because you can't mix these so close together without it. There's also fencing or screening regulations in between and whoop will be bearing that cost. I will be bearing that cost, you know? So, if I try to do anything with lots or stores, I'll be up here asking, they'll be telling me screen it, landscape it, you know, setback it and everything else, it doesn't, this comes a major cost for me just because we put a house next door, so.
So, you own Chestnut 313, 311, 305 and 112 Crockett? So, essentially, the ones running right to left?
When you're looking at that screen right there, that's, I own that one to the left and I own the corner, then I own the hotels, then you go back over at the top on Main, like the 315 or something, Main? I can't really remember.
I think it's 314, 316, even numbers?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
And we're working with Mr. Gray, we bought the liquor store and keep planning on selling us the rest. So, we own all that land except for those three houses to the north.
Would you care to respond to his?
He's not incorrect. He would have to do any kind of screening, landscaping. We would ask of that from anybody that's going to do any kind of non-residential development. Screening would also have to take place along the alley because it's adjacent to residential uses, so there is an additional setback and screening requirements for that side, unless you mentioned purchasing that, that would change that. I will also say that these lots were platted at 25-foot wide. So, that took place in the early 1900s, late 1800s, depending on when this area was platted. So, it was platted for residential purposes. How it was zoned light industrial, we already talked about that the railroad came through. That was most likely how it was, why it was zoned the way it was. But I will say, even if, because the future land use plan does, from my interpretation, it calls this area to be established as a neighborhood. That's what we base our zoning off of. There is, it's a kind of a confusing document to review and so, there is an opportunity for it to be designated as the downtown center also, which also allows for neighborhood and the mixed uses. So, your commercial, your industrial uses, the type of non-residential uses we see in the downtown area currently. So, either way, when staff looks at a rezoning request, we go back to the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. And that is what is backing this zoning right now.
On that, I disagree with the lots being 25 feet, meaning it's residential. Every downtown lot is 25 feet, that means all Main Street would be residential. So, shooting in off a 25-foot base lot is not, which is how they did it. All of your old, old flats were 25 feet and that's even commercial, all downtown, 25 feet when it's platted.
Speaking as a historian, that's the reason it was there for the downtown businesses at that time. We're all 25 feet, so I'm not sure that it's a great reason. But that one section there is multifamily already.
And I do not have an answer as to why that is zoned that way.
Well, it's like last meeting, all the different zoning set through there.
That's not even a full lot, is it?
No.
It could be. It's 25-foot wide. There's three of them.
So, that is a 25-foot?
Yeah, there's three of them there. So, and I don't, I don't have the measure, I don't, I didn't measure that particular zoning, but it is possible that that's 25-foot wide.
One suggestion I did have, the suggestion is the, he has three lots there, so the two, to the part to the right when you're looking at it could be rezoned as residential and then put a buffer between with the parcel of the other lots. Not needed to build that house, it's just an extra lot. He originally tried to fire our action, but we were unable to, we needed to build two lots there. So, he was originally going to build one house on those two lots and any of this one can be left alone.
And I guess just a question as well, I mean, to, there's no way we technically can accommodate your request because if we approve a plat here, we can't have it as a condition on a future use.
No.
So, technically, those two can't be linked anyway, right?
Correct.
So, it's either, you know, approve or deny this, but we can't put a condition on this based upon something
Correct.
that happened on something that is not owned.
Especially since the zoning ordinance doesn't support that. It's any kind of, when you have the separation of uses, it is on the non-residential or the multifamily for that developers in to screen. Obviously, if the residential comes first and they already do have screening, that does aid in the requirement for screening. Typically, we see developers want to do additional screening though between those two uses.
The rezoning of this property does not impact the current zoning of Mr. Earnhardt's property, is that correct?
The only way it impacts it, it, just the development standards that he would have to abide by, that is correct.
It does, in fact, it does, it makes me have a setback, a setback that's larger than the lot.
What's the difference in the setbacks based on, as it is now versus what's proposed?
Light industrial is zero, I can build all the way up to the edge of the property and next to residential, I have to be one-and-a-half times the building height. So, say in an average building of an industrial, that would be, that would be larger than the lot, so. It would make it a zero-use lot.
With all due respect, we've not received any applications for your properties at this point in time and so, that makes it difficult to, as the commission was saying, to make conditions based upon what may or may not come before this body. We can't make decisions, or they cannot make decisions based upon that. They can only take our recommendations based off of the information that we have at this point in time.
Case law, the...
We're not debating case law, that is not my job. If we want to do that, we will have to get legal involved.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody else here to speak regarding this request? Any further questions or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, yep. Also, since there are no further comments, we will close the public hearing.
And again, I would just note, this is a recommendation that goes to the city council.
I move to recommend the approval of changing the zoning of the subject property from light industrial to multifamily 1, multifamily residential zoning district to the SF5 single-family residential zoning district to allow for construction of a single-family dwelling.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Got a second?
Okay, have a motion, second for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Please note, it was approved with Chairman Sherr abstaining and not present for discussion. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner. Item 3B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item I have for you is a request to rezone property commonly known as 1827 South Armstrong from the light industrial district to the commercial district to allow for commercial uses. I'm sorry, this is case number 2025-45Z. Back in March, city staff received a TABC application requesting approval for a bar at a structure located on this property that's commonly known as 1827 South Armstrong. Through the review of this application, it was determined that the property is zoned light industrial and unfortunately, a bar is not an allowed use at all within this zoning district. Development staff, which included the fire marshal, public works, and then our team from planning, met with the tenants and the property owner to discuss how to move forward. And so, in order for them to move forward, a rezoning was required along with a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit request for a bar for this prop, or for a structure on this property is a companion item on this agenda. Rezoning from light industrial to the commercial zoning district is allowed by the future land use plan. This area is designated to be developed in a mixed commercial manner with an overlay of revitalization area. So, rezoning to commercial does comply with the comprehensive plan. With that, staff recommends approval of the request. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And there is, there is a representative for this case here if you have any questions of them.
Okay, any questions of staff? All right, is the applicant's representative here to speak on this case? Yes, ma'am. Just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Karen Sawyer and I'm in here and I have Mike Skelter, who is my son, who is the owner, and his wife, Carrie Skelter. And he is in surgery right now for, I have a back surgery, so that's why he's not here. So, do I need to answer questions?
Any questions of our speaker?
Did you get her address?
I'm sorry, did you give your address?
My own home, by the way. Yes, it's 420 Hannah Drive, Dennison.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have a question regarding the bar operation. Is there gonna be any food served at all or is it strictly? Is there gonna be any food served at all or is it strictly an alcohol-serving establishment?
If I, if I can, that is the next case.
The next case.
Next, ma'am, excuse me.
Never mind, okay. I reject that question under, under this line item.
Not right now, not right now.
Stand by. This is just the rezoning, the next one will be.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this request, either for or against? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of changing the zoning of the subject property from light industrial zoning district to the commercial zoning district.
Second? I have a motion with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. We'll open the public hearing on item 4C.
Thank you. Item 4C is a request for a conditional use permit for property legally, or commonly known as 1827 South Armstrong to allow for the use of a bar. This is case number 2025-66 CUP. Similar to the last case, as I mentioned, we received a TABC license requesting approval for a bar use. However, it was determined the property is zoned light industrial. So, we met with the property owners and the tenants. Just heard the case for the rezoning and this is the case for the conditional use permit. So, as the tenants for the property are requesting a conditional use permit for the operations of Bloopers Pub, stated in the project narrative, the applicant has previous experience operating a bar and their goal with Bloopers is to create a safe and comfortable environment. Oh, thank you. Everybody's gotten to hear my voice, that's great. So, to create a safe and comfortable environment for their patrons together, they have proposed the hours of operation to consist of 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily and they have not requested an after-hour permit through TABC. In addition to their mixed cocktails and beer, the applicants will provide a food menu and per their project narratives, this will consist of a healthier option. The applicant does wish to have live entertainment on the weekends, but they will, the music will cease at 10:00 p.m. in order to comply with city ordinances and to be good neighbors to the properties around them. The applicant has provided a proposed parking plan that you can kinda see here. However, after discussions with the fire marshal, the proposed driving aisles and parking spaces do not meet the fire code requirements. And additionally, additional parking spaces are needed in order to meet requirements detailed in section 28.50, which is our off-street parking requirements for zoning, not only for their commercial uses, but for those, for the spaces that they wish to utilize outdoors. All parking is gonna be provided off-site via this adjacent property to the south. You can kinda see where they're proposing the parking, so that property is actually not a part of the subject property, so it's off-site. There, the applicants and the property owners are working with that, that property owner to either establish a lease or some kind of agreement to allow them to utilize that property for parking. This is not typical because the ordinance does require all parking to be located on-site. However, you can kinda tell the current site does not provide for a lot of parking and so, staff is supportive of this. However, the parking does need to meet fire requirements as well as zoning requirements. Staff is asking that the commission consider placing a condition upon this conditional use permit, that a parking plan is provided to our staff so that we can review it and approve it based off of our parking requirements as well as the fire department's needs for emergency access. Additionally, within their project narrative, the applicant states that improvements are being made to make the site visibly more appealing. A landscaping plan was not provided with this application and given that the future land use plan designates this area as a revitalization area, staff recommends that a condition be placed on this conditional use permit, that a landscaping plan be provided to staff to be reviewed and approved prior to any certificate of occupancy. There's a lot of opportunity here to revitalize this area and the applicant is taking significant steps in improving the site. They, I do believe they've installed a new fence and they are doing, making improvements to the exterior structure, the white structure that you see there at the corner. However, given that this is a revitalization area and it is a major thoroughfare into our downtown, we would like to take the opportunity to try and place some landscaping requirements on that site. As I mentioned several times, this, the future land use plan designates this area as a revitalization area and it is a mixed commercial designation as well. Approval of the conditional use permit for the use as a bar is compliant with both of these designations, or I'm sorry, for the mixed commercial designation with the improvements that are being made to the site, not only to the building, but the possibility of including landscaping and then improving that parking. It could meet the revitalization area designation as well. So, with that, staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. A parking plan is provided to staff illustrating spaces and driving aisles that meet the parking requirements listed in section 28.50 and fire requirements and that a landscaping plan is provided.
Okay, Diane, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
The condition on parking. Concern I have here is, can we ask for a signed agreement at the time it goes to council for approval?
Yes, sir.
Because if we can, if we, if we prove this on just a condition that they're gonna make an agreement, what happens if they sell or lease the property somewhere down the line, then we have no parking?
Yes, sir, and that was something that we discussed when we had their meeting with them, having some sort of agreement with that property owner for that reason. It'll, it, not only does it, it ensures that we're going to get the parking that we need for the site and the use, but it also protects them so that the property owner doesn't render their conditional use permit useless.
What's the length of time on this CUP?
So, it is indefinite if they meet the conditions. They do have 180 days per the ordinance to obtain a certificate of occupancy or to pull permits that are applicable to the project. So, there is some time, there's six months that they have the available, availability once, if approved, to do the improvements that are necessary before they get their certificate.
I think my question is, there's no time limit on the CUP itself, okay?
That's correct.
So, where I'm going with this is, if the lease says, you know, we're gonna lease you this property for parking for 60 months and then we have an indefinite CUP, what happens if the parking agreement expires and they're still in business and we have an issue?
It is a risk that they would have to take. If for some reason, the lease for that parking was to lapse and they are unable to remedy the parking that's required by either the conditional use permit or the zoning code at that time, it would render their conditional use permit.
Can we tie the two together? The parking agreement and the CUP, can they be tied together so that if the parking agreement expires, so does the CUP?
Yes, we could. We could.
Is there a clear agreement or understanding of the amount of parking that's required?
Not at this moment. It's, so the structure itself is not a very big structure and so, the ordinance requires, the parking would be established per the commercial use. There's not an actual bar designation within the parking and then there is a separate designation for outdoor square footage. I don't know how much space they're going to be able to park because this parking plan doesn't really provide that, which is why we're asking for that condition so that we can establish the parking spaces that are needed as well as the access that's needed for fire.
Any other questions of staff?
If I may, I understand you're trying to either make sure that they are aligned together, the parking lease and the CUP.
the parking lease and the CUP, or that there's a protection for the business owner, right? We don't want that CUP, we would never want to come back and be like, you're done, right? Because they've been a good tenant possibly or something like that. Maybe there's an opportunity for your language to also say, this is, we are looking at redevelopment standards. So incorporating redevelopment standards or at the discretion of the commission, something to help if that should happen in the future to not have to go back to the property owner, the business owner and say, "Sorry, that's expired. You're done. We're not willing to work with you." We need to, I think it's in everyone's best interest to find a way of working with that business owner as well in this kind of situation.
What about a deed restriction of some sort that would be recorded?
I agree with that, but again, you know, you got outdoor space that, that's going to be used. I mean, we need some sort of security that we're not going to have issues with cars parking on another property illegally and you can create a problem.
I think if there were issues with the agreement with, for the parking and the conditional use permit, it would be up to the tenant to come to the city, say, "Hey, this lease is out. We need to figure out another way to park." And as we did prior to this meeting and prior to receiving that application, it would have to be all of the development review team in order to determine where that parking could take place. And unfortunately, if that parking could not be remedied, then at that point, the conditional use permit would lapse.
But it's also, it's more than just parking, looking at this, right? It's the fire lane, because the fire lane exits and, and or enters on adjacent property.
So when I spoke to the fire marshal, so the property to the north is all of the, of 1827 South Armstrong. To the south is the property in question. The fire marshal's not concerned about the front. He is concerned about the, the drive aisle that's located on the adjacent property. And we're not looking to plat this fire lane or anything like that. It's not, it's just a, a driving aisle, I guess you could say. I wish the fire marshal was here to speak on this, but it won't be a platted easement. It will be wide enough for their trucks to get through, whatever the spacing is going to be needed per the fire marshal. But it is not an actual driving aisle. It's basically a parking lot is what they're going to be basing this off of.
Well, and I think too, that side fire lane that's going up the south side there, I think there's plenty of, they can fight, they could fight the fire from that lane. They don't necessarily need the fire lane in the front, actually.
That was the, that was what the fire marshal stated.
So that's not, that's not really an issue, I don't think. I, I just think it's a matter of, of us protecting down the line, making sure that we've got compliance with parking requirements for, for on-site parking. Because this is kind of a strange thing. Is, are there anyone, I'm sorry. Yeah, I would say if you have a facility you can't park at, that's. Yeah. Is there anyone else here to speak on this request? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any more discussion among the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Could you talk again about the kinds of words you're looking for for this conditional?
So.
So we can formulate this directly?
Sure. So I do think that the recommended motion that is in my staff report is probably the most appropriate. It does require the parking plan as well as the landscaping plan. We, I've already chatted with the applicant about me, meeting with myself and the fire marshal sometime next week to try and flush out a good parking plan that we could take to council. So I think that what is provided here stating that it has to meet the requirements listed within section 28.50, which once again, that's our off-site parking requirement section, as well as any fire requirements, I do think that that's sufficient.
And not necessarily required to tie the parking plan with a.
A lease?
Yes.
That is, that is up to the commission to include that. If you, if you wish to make that a third condition, then I would just add it in the motion.
All right, I'll take a stab at this.
Okay.
I move to recommend the approval for a conditional use permit to allow for the use of a bar at the subject property with the following conditions. Number one, a parking plan is provided to staff illustrating the spaces and driving aisles that meet the parking requirements listed in section 28.50 and fire requirements. Two, that a appropriate mechanism is determined to ensure the tying of the parking area to the timing of the conditional use permit is established. And three, that a landscaping plan is provided.
Okay? I'll second. Motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll open the public hearing for item, I'm sorry, 4D.
Thank you, sir. Item 4D is a request for a replat for the subject property that is currently the replat of lots one and two of the Expressway Park Edition. So the site here is predominantly the Rosemary. That road that doesn't necessarily dissect this property, but connects the property from Lilis Lane to the US 75 Service Road is Viking Street. Everything to the south of that street is the Rosemary Development. The property to the north is owned by Parkside. And they are requesting this replat in order to create five legal lots of record and to provide the correct alignment of Viking Street, which is currently, which has been constructed. And the property to the south is currently under construction and does have access to water and sewer and provides adequate access both to Lilis Lane and US 75 with that Viking Street cutting through. Staff recommends approval of the request. And I'm present for any questions that you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Applicant here this morning?
Yes, sir. Joe Gilbert, Kano Warren East Taylor Sherman, Texas. Do you have any other questions?
Okay. Any questions of our speaker? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak on, on this request? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion. I move to approve the proposed replat.
I'll second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's open the public hearing for item 4E.
Thank you, sir. The last item I have for you is a request for a replat of lot 9R, block two of the Fennel Edition, being a replat of lots nine and 10, block two of the Western Hill subdivision, case number 2025-57RP. This is an aerial view of that subject property. It is commonly known as 1012 Dailyon. And as you can see, it has been developed in a single-family manner. It is zoned, single-family, 7.5. I wasn't able to confirm this through the review, but it, based off of what the surveyor had provided me, they're requesting to replat these two properties in order to build an accessory structure. As we have provided a lot of plats that where applicants are trying to build those accessory structures, an accessory structure cannot exist on a site without a main dwelling unit. And so moving forward with this replat, we'll create one legal lot of record and allow them to move forward with that accessory structure. The lot meets all of the lot dimension and area requirements listed within the single-family 7.5 residential zoning district. For that reason, staff recommends approval of the requests, and I'm present for any questions you may have.
Any questions? All right. Anyone here to speak on this request? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
Have a motion. Second. Have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Staff updates.
Just one. Last night at city council, the conditional use permit for the office warehouse development that was located on, in between Ridge Drive and Loy Lake Road came before you guys at the last PNC meeting. That was approved.
Okay.
And so that's all that I have for you.
That's all we got? Okay. Well, that being said, if we see no other business come forth commissioned, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Have a motion? Second. Have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hope not. So we stand adjourned at 10:40 a.m. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.